Anybody in the room either turn off or mute your cell phones or other electronic And we'll start the evening off with public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody from the, in the audience who wishes to speak to an item that is not on this evening's agenda is welcome to come to the podium and share your thoughts. Does anybody have a public comment this evening that is not pertinent to the 93 Green Bay Road piece? Seeing none, I will close public comment and then move forward. Item number three is 93 Green Bay Road Proposals. Tonight, each of the, of the three finalists will be presenting their proposed plans for the 93 Green Bay Road site. Each finalist will have 20 minutes to summarize their proposals. After the presentation, there will be time for the council and the, and general public comment. So tonight, our first presenter, just to run through it real quick, will be Tala Coffee. Then we'll go to Firecakes Craft Donuts after that, and then Left Coast Food and Juice will be the final presentation. So we'll just turn it over to David at this point, and it's your show, David.
Sure. Just won't repeat anything President Rents said, but would just like to introduce the team from Tala Coffee. They will be our first presentation. Ryan Hickman, who is the founder and CEO of Tala Coffee, will lead his team through the presentation.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, David. Super excited to be here tonight. What an amazing opportunity to be considered for such a wonderful gateway location here in Weneka. It's my pleasure to introduce myself and my team. As David said, I'm Ryan Hickman, founder and CEO of Tala Coffee. I'm just going to take a few minutes to introduce myself and my team. Like I said, I've been in the food service industry for about 25 years, a little over, if you count my time working as an employee, but I was a franchisee of Rosati's Pizza, operating two locations in Vernon Hills and Libertyville. In 2016, I sold my restaurants to start Tala Coffee Roasters. We launched our company in 2017 with a roasting and production facility in Libertyville, and then opened our Highwood Cafe in 2018. Tala Coffee Roasters. What does that word "roasters" mean? So just in short, it means we have the ability to source and select coffees of our choice from all over the coffee regions of the world, bring them into our roasting facility, roast them, package them, deliver them to our cafe, wholesale and online customers. We'll learn more and talk more about that throughout this presentation about what sets us apart as a roastery. But at this time, I'd like to introduce Keith Lilja. He's our head roaster and graphic designer. Keith roasts all of our coffees at our roasting facility in Libertyville. He is the creative lead on all of our marketing materi-- or I'm sorry, I'm sorry. He's the creative lead for all of our merchandise, our branding, our clothing, swag, that's all got Keith's stamp of approval on it, and he drives the creative process through that with a little bit of input from all of us. Stefan Tong, cafe manager and educational director. Cafe manager in a role as a hands-on member of our team. Stefan oversees our cafe as, like I said, as a hands-on member, educating and training our staff to deliver a customer experience that aligns with our core values. The reason why customers return and receive the same outstanding service and quality drinks, Stefan puts our repeatable processes into place, and then our employees alongside with him execute them. Joanna Tong. She is our Director of Marketing and Operations. I've worked closely with Joanna throughout this entire proposal process. She is going to present to you tonight our concept for this fantastic opportunity here in Weneka. Thank you. Joanna?
One question.
Yeah.
Can we, what's our pol-- not for you, for, what's our policy on having speakers, when they're speaking, take off their mask?
I would be fine with it.
I would be fine with it.
Great.
And you can grab some water so he could be technically drinking and eating.
Oh, perfect. I brought a water bottle.
Coffee, coffee.
Coffee, excuse me. But it would be really helpful.
I agree, Rob.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And thanks, Ryan, for the introduction, and again, thank you all for having us here. This is a really exciting project. So as Ryan said, I am going to present to you the concept that we've come up with for this space. Of course, we want to use this site for the space for our second location, our second cafe, and we want to really build on the success we've seen in our first, but also adapt to the specificity of the Weneka community. We're really actually inspired by the building itself, the history, the charm of the old 70s gas station. We think it's really cool, and so we want to keep that footprint, keep the existing structure, but just reuse and restore as much as we can to, of course, reduce environmental impact as well as just to maintain the historical auto-oriented charm that exists in the Indian Hill District. We think that is a huge draw to this area. So jumping into, a significant issue, of course, with this site is activating this corner will mean changing some parking and circulation. So we want to do that in a few ways. First, we would like to remove the barrier between the 93 Green Bay lot road, or lot, as well as the metro lot that is adjacent, and we'd also like to reverse the traffic direction in all or part of that metro lot so that it all flows one direction from there. We kind of want to push down the parking, any existing parking on the lot to the very south end of it to use as much space as we can for the outdoor gathering space and surrounding the cafe area. Those closest spots to the building, we would reserve, of course, for handicap, and then we'd like to have a couple 15-minute spots available for people just jumping into the cafe to get a quick drink, as well as for, to facilitate our curbside pickup, which we've launched during the pandemic and has been really helpful, and we think that'll be a trend that continues. We also want to request to preserve some spaces, maybe 20 spaces in the adjacent lot that would be non-permit day use for our business and surrounding businesses to just accommodate us pushing some of that parking off the lot. And finally, we would have a loading zone close to the building that would allow for our internal deliveries. Most of what we deliver is internal, as well as some small external deliveries, that we would be able to have a loading zone there that would keep anything, any traffic from building up. Of course, we'd want to avoid ever having traffic build up into the road being so close to an intersection. That would be very important. One of the very first things we had to consider in looking at this spot was whether the interior would work for us. 1370 square feet is not a lot to work with, so we wanted to make sure that we definitely could do what we want to do and be successful here. So to do that, we took what we feel like is really reasonable and realistic measurements for what would happen, what we would have to have operationally in the back of house, the front of house, as well as bathrooms, utility closets, all of that, which we've put all of that kind of in that more north end of the building there. And then we wanted to take the remainder of that space and really just maximize seating to make sure that that works for us as a viable business option, especially given that this is Chicago, and although we're going to have an awesome outdoor space, it will be not in, used to its fullest capacity for all of the year, of course. So we wanted to make a variety of seating options, and really our hope, we're, we are a busy cafe with lines to the door on Saturday mornings, and also a lot of people that want to stay and do homework or work from home, which of course is now a growing trend, and so we want to make sure that even if every single one of those seats is filled, there's still sensible traffic flow throughout the building for a line of people to wait for their drinks and to get out the door. In terms of inspiration, we really want this space to be cohesive with our brand identity, of course, but really distinct and different than our existing cafe, because this isn't Starbucks, we're not a cookie cutter business. We want people to want to go to both, to see both and see what's going on at both. And to draw inspiration, a lot of what, again, we're really inspired by the 70s aesthetic, so we're going for a little bit more of a retro aesthetic here. We see lots of natural light, lots of light-colored wood, terracotta plants with succulents, and just a really open and welcoming environment that's still modern and cool as well. Looking at the plot layout overall, we really wanted to, of course, keep with Weneka's vision for this to be a community gathering area, and to do that, we wanted to prioritize, again, the amount of seating that we could offer and the gathering space that we could offer here. So we did that in a couple versatile seating arrangements. You see, kind of on the south end around the trees, we included some masonry seat walls that would be used all throughout the year, as well as wanting to come up with all-weather tables that would be able to be there after close. We wouldn't have to remove them and lock them up, they'd be permanent structures, they'd be there after close, as well as all throughout the winter, for those that would want to brave sitting with a hot cup of coffee, which last year during the winter and the pandemic, we actually had a lot of use of our outdoor patio, so we're confident that that will work. We also, of course, want to accommodate as many pedestrian sort of entrances to the space as possible, knowing that this is a really high-traffic pedestrian area, and so we kind of want it accessible from all different areas. And one significant challenge to the plot layout in the exterior area is the northwest corner that has the significant steep slope. We can't just like put a table there and have people, they'd be falling off. So we, in meeting with a landscape professional, we were able to come up with sort of a three-tiered deck system that would allow for that space to be usable for tables, but also maintain that entrance as an ADA accessible entrance, and avoid breaking any contaminated concrete in that area, which we felt was important. Of course, this is also a very important gateway entrance for Weneka in the Indian Hill District, and so we want, we just think it's really important to work closely with the village in establishing their vision for this space, and in congruence with the other downtown districts as well. So we see, of course, something like a gateway welcome sign, either out the corner or maybe above the, over the street itself. We see wayfinding signs, especially in proximity to the bus stop and the crosswalk there. We also would love to see scale lighting or even festoon poles that would hang lights over the patio that would be, kind of bring in that cohesive downtown feel that is kind of happening in the rest of Weneka as well. So as you can see, our concept for this space is all about returning this building to its former glory and then elevating it beyond. We want to restore the porcelain tile, the original porcelain tile, as well as add a like 70s-inspired gas station-esque sign to the top. We want to replace the existing garage doors with big glass doors that would bring in tons of natural light and soften the exterior and be a welcoming space. And of course, we want to maintain that outdoor atmosphere that would be welcoming to pedestrians and the community. You can see, again, the tiered deck in the corner that allows for bigger tables to be there, as well as the seat walls that allow for smaller tables and gatherings. We'd want to have bike racks available, and of course, we just, we see this whole space being filled with seating opportunities and gathering opportunities, and on a sunny Saturday like we had this past week, we have no reason to believe every single one of those seats couldn't be filled with happy people. But of course, getting from the somewhat dilapidated situation that it is in right now to where we see this going is going to take a lot of work, but our team is very much up for the challenge. We are a highly involved leadership team, the four of us, and very hands-on. We, that has served us really well in previous projects, including our design and renovation of our roastery, which, of course, we did when we opened, but we also recently doubled our roasting space by acquiring the neighboring facility and have recently undergone that renovation as well. And then obviously, our cafe design and build-out was a huge and similar challenge in terms of design and build-out. We're also partnering with Preservation Properties Group as our GC for this, this development, and they've done many adaptive reuse projects, including the fire station that our first cafe is currently in. In terms of a timeline, we are ready to kick off and hit the ground running as soon as we sign a lease. With an aggressive timeline has us opening in early summer. Really, the key to that is getting the structural renovations before it gets too cold, and that way we could do interior renovations as the cold weather sets in and makes some things impossible, of course. In, in every way, we really are confident that Weneka is the perfect fit for us, and we have an existing cafe that in, that is, we have a repeatable business model. We know that we will work here. Of course, our coffee is our, sort of our pride and joy. It is our craft and our passion, but there are a lot of small businesses that start with a passion for craft and end up not working, but we think that our success is due in large part to the intersection that we have between quality and accessibility or approachability, which are two of our core values. And we have coffee that, like Ryan said, we source ourselves, we roast ourselves with a high degree of quality, and then we present it with traditional espresso drinks that even the most pretentious coffee aficionado is very excited about and impressed with. But we also, even though we have that side, we also have specialty drinks and seasonal drinks that appeal to a wide range of tastes, and that's really pretty unique in the industry. Usually, you either have the like sugary fun drinks, or you have the traditional sort of intense coffee drinks, and we have a passion for both, because we think whatever kind of coffee you enjoy, it should be the best kind of coffee you can get. And so whether you're putting a bunch of sugar in it, or it's just plain espresso, it should be the best coffee you've ever had. So we do that by, first of all, having a high value for repeatability and consistency through our tactics of training and, and just presentation, as well as we make all of our syrups in-house, so we have a really, we don't just throw Samonin syrup in there, which a lot of specialty coffee shops do. We value that this drink should be the best drink, even if it's, you know, a Frappuccino-type situation. We have a drink called the Mermaid, which is our take on the Starbucks caramel macchiato, so it's a, it's a, it's a good one. And we have a lot of seasonal drinks as well, that we put a lot of work into making really fun seasonal drinks that get people coming, and they're excited about coming back for. We do have some food options at our cafe. We have some crowd-pleasing donuts and pastries, as well as some grab-and-go options, but we are trying to adapt to the demand for more food. We've got that request a lot, and so we're exploring options like sandwiches, salads, and different small bites like that that we can add to our menu, and we would want to launch Weneka with that already a part of it. Sorry, I think it paused. So our cafe, we started, as Ryan said, in 2018 in August, and we had no paid advertising and no media attention, and yet we served 6,000 customers in our first 30 days of opening. We, our average ticket price increased 31% since opening, and that's without adding any significant things to our menu. Like I said, no food or any, any changes to that. Yeah, and we grew also 40% during the pandemic, of which, of course, many businesses did not, and we're proud to say that we did not have to lay off any employees, and in fact, we were able to provide promotional opportunities, raises to employees who have been working really hard, and even hire more people to accommodate our growth. So we have, I think, established that we are a, a company that can grow and has grown, but also can handle aggressive growth, and that is something truly not everybody can do. We also are really good at adaptively and creatively meeting our market, and this is something that I think is especially due to the division of passion and skills within our leadership team, and that makes it possible for us to really pivot, which of course was important during the pandemic, to pivot into what the market is needing and wanting in that moment, in ways that most small businesses don't have the bandwidth to do, and most big businesses don't have the freedom to do. So we've been able to do that in a number of ways. Like I said, during the pandemic, we had a bunker blend that we launched that was like during the quarantine, where everybody got a five-pound bag of coffee to last them out. We have a University of Tala Coffee swag that students have loved in the closing of their schools. They wanted, they talked about being University of Tala Coffee students. We also have a program we called Neighborly, which we launched to be able to deliver coffee and coffee goods to people's doors, and that is something that we would want to expand to Weneka upon opening here as well. So with all of this, obviously, we are confident that Weneka is a great and the perfect fit for us to come here with the proximity to Green Bay Trail, to New Trier, and just the robust residential surrounding market. We're confident that we would be able to thrive here as a business. However, as city council members, as, and especially as community members of this area, your question is not whether Tala is a good fit for Weneka, but whether Weneka is, or whether we are a good fit for you, whether we will offer you what you want. And truly, coffee is a really unique, a unique business, and we have a really, really unique spot in, in the community that we serve. A local cafe really is unlike anything else in that even the most devoted customers for a restaurant, a bar, or dessert place only come maybe three or four times a week. However, our customers come every day, and sometimes three, four. We have, we have a guy who comes five days, five times a day for a latte. These, people come repeatedly for coffee. It's not, it's not tied to a mealtime, it's not even tied to a time of day. I know it seems like it would be tied to the morning, but it's not. People come all day long. And so in that way, we have a really unique place in people's lives, and that's something we take seriously. Our cafe is a place where when you walk in, you feel welcome, and we know that because people tell us that all the time. They feel welcome, they feel like they can be themselves. Students feel like they can come and do homework, and parents feel good about dropping their kids off to be there all afternoon, and those two things don't always go together. And it's a place where you become a regular, and somebody can hand you a coffee and say your name. It's a, it's, yeah, it's a place where people meet for their first dates, people get engaged, even babies have their first steps. This is a really unique opportunity, and in many ways, coffee is really intimate in that way, because we are, in some times, the first human interaction somebody has in a day, and we set the tone for their whole day, and we are known for having positive energy, positive, we say good, good vibes, positive, high fives. But we have a really positive energy that people are attracted to, and in fact, we're, we've told, this last week, I was stopped in the street by somebody, a young family in the area we are, saying, you know, they just moved here from the city, they have two young kids, they moved here from the city because they were looking for something like us, and when they saw Tala, they were like, we can move here, it's okay, we can move here from the city, we can finally like feel comfortable. It is truly a comfortable place to be, and I think that's something really unique. So we're confident that not only is Weneka a good fit for our business model, but that we have something to offer you and your community that no other business can. So with that, we'll take questions.
Thanks, Joanna, that was great.
That was great.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Appreciate it. All right, guys, well, now it's our time. Questions for Ryan, Joanna, and the rest of the team?
Or Stefan and Keith as well? Oh, I have a question.
Answer.
You know, you talked, Joanna, quite ultimately about the location. It is a complicated location, but it's great station, obviously, for passing through there. And I always think about something like, you know, Howard, you know, during the day, you talked about people coming in the morning, after the talk. How, how do you think Howard would sort of live and breathe in that location density-wise? What's the peak hours? You know, did you see in Highwood people coming?
Yeah.
Do you see that traffic flow being something that's going to be an impediment? Can we work that out, or what would your power work?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yeah, we do, we do expect it to be similar to our other location in terms of our peak hours. We're also, we have a heavy, like, student traffic there, but I would expect that, given it's so, so close to New Trier, that it would be a little bit more tied to those hours. So we would expect a, a big rush in the morning, kind of right before school, and then, of course, anyone who lives in that area and is coming toward the freeway would maybe be stopping on their way to work as well. So we expect that in the morning, and then usually we have sort of a later morning group of, of people coming in to, to work from there, and those are more so the people that are staying, not getting their coffee to go. And then we would expect a really heavy amount of students, especially coming after school, of course, just because they're already there and on the spot, but because that's already what we see, is students love to come after school and do homework, college students as well also come, and so those would be, again, people wanting to stay and hang out for a while. But in terms of how we would handle the traffic, that is one of the reasons that the interior floor plan was so important to nail right away, and of course, it's a draft, but, but a lot of what we, we've, we can do, and the three of us have worked in the coffee industry a while in different cafes as well, and the way that we design everything is very important for how fast we can knock out drinks, and that is something that we do a lot better than most of our competitors.
How many square feet is the Highwood facility?
Um, I think it's...
Seventeen, but there's two distinct bays.
Yes.
Yes.
Seventeen versus fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question going on with your question, just to tag along. You're being a coffee shop, kudos to you that you were able to increase 31%. I was curious, and you answered my question here, did you increase prices, did you add something, your merchandise, does that increase your...
Most of it came from some of our, like pivoting, like she mentioned, with really creative marketing and merchandise. We were able to add a few other, like grabbing, we experimented with some grab-and-go stuff, but that didn't really get us the elevated seat. We also saw the success of bunker blend in the two and five-pound capacity, and added two-pound bags to our lineup, as well as our 12-ounce bags, so people looking for something more to stock up. That's not just available online only for delivery or USPS delivery, it's something that you can go to the cafe and grab. And then, yeah, just, just really honestly, when that University of Tala stuff came out, and new sweatshirts, new zip-ups, we pivot with the hoodie, if it's a zip, whatever's in, in kind of trending, that's really, really helped our, because, you know, something that you look at is average ticket sale, how do we make more money in the hours that we're open?
Right, and so it's awesome, it's fantastic, super creative. Your, your game for coffee kind of has to be volume, right? Because an average ticket price needs to be higher than, let's say, something that's more well-rounded. That said, what percent in traffic and parking, et cetera, what percent would you say stays? And I guess what I'm getting at is, to ensure that you guys are having enough volume and ability, what percent of people get a coffee and then take a parking spot and sit for the whole time versus get in and out so you can have a constant flow for your own business sake?
Right.
Yeah. This is a meat to what time of day you're going to be looking at, because first thing in the morning, most of your customers aren't coming to sit down, and so you have that initial wave when you open up, and that has to be at least off of what time that city wakes up. And so for us, that decision during the pandemic was to move since 7:00 a.m. We have previously been open at 6:00 a.m., but 7:00 a.m. made sense until we started that at Highwood. So again, it kind of will depend on what time the metro wakes up for that, and so that will be based on the school, it'll be based on what the parents need, start moving. So again, you'll have that initial wave, none of that is really part of the traffic though, that's just people coming in, getting stuff in there, going out. And then traditionally, across most coffee shops, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. is when you're going to have a lot of parking, getting out. And so that's when it starts to really sort of fill up. They're all coming in for meetings, they want to work remotely, they're friends, all that stuff kind of happens, drops down for lunch, and so you hit that immune period for a couple of hours, and then that's when people leave, and things kind of open up again, and then you start rising up again once you have people finishing up the work, and then coming into shops, meeting people again. Forty-five students, probably around three or four. So some of it is the traditional sort of waves of the coffee shop, but then some of it kind of depends on city and the movement of that, but you can expect the parking to really start to fill up around that sort of 9:00 a.m. period.
Cool, thank you.
Others?
So we all love coffee in Weneka, and it feels like we have some, lots of coffee options. When you were looking at just a coffee shop, or not just a coffee shop, but your concept, do you have concerns about that? Or is it, you're looking at, you know, we think of our commercial areas as very true estate commercial areas. We have covered woods, we have the main Elm district, and then, of course, we've got this very underserved, you know, maybe Indian Hill, which also has a good health, right? You can take some dollars away from town, right?
Leakage in the opposite direction.
Interesting. But I'm curious, you know, when, when you... But I'm curious, you know, when you're looking at your investment in this location, do you have concerns about some of the, you know, I guess, competition?
We don't have a ton of concern about competition. Like I said, because we're so different, but also we, we, the proximity between this location and the nearest Starbucks, which is kind of the closest, being with a lot of menu options. Obviously, there are other places that serve coffee, but more so food with coffee in it. But it is actually a very similar distance than we are to the nearest Starbucks in Highwood, if that makes sense. The proximity is very similar. And so when we opened Highwood, we were really concerned about that. But just because we had never done it before, we weren't quite sure how to feel. But that does make us feel a lot more confident in that. And then we also have an overwhelming amount of people that just refuse to go to Starbucks after they taste our coffee. And they just say, I'll, I'll drive the extra one mile to you to do it. At the end of the day, though, a lot of people will go to the closest coffee shop on their way to work. You know, you're running late. You're not going to go a mile out of your way, even if it is just a mile. And so the robust residential area does make us feel a lot more comfortable with that as well.
Yeah. And as you touched on, those three distinct kind of areas, we do feel like we're removed in a, we're not in that area where hometown is kind of opening up. We're not near friends in that side of town. And so we feel like, and also it's in our experience that we, we're a destination cafe, much like a brewery would be for, for, in, in another realm. Groceries and, and the experience that we've had, we're pulling people from Libertyville, Braesley. We're pulling people from Evanston. We're pulling people from Kennelworth and Winnetka now already. So we feel confident that, that destination coupled with the diverse areas that you have here within Winnetka, that, that, as you've mentioned, underutilized, under, underserved area would be a great place for us. And obviously, New Trier right down the street is just a great, great starting point for, for what we've seen from our students, from our student clientele.
And, and, and just a follow-up question. I'm not familiar with the, with this one school in Highwood. It sounds like you have a very robust student population there. How close are the, you know, I guess...
Let's speak on that. Stefan, where are you seeing...
They're not super close, actually.
No, they're really not.
Is our student population...
Most of our student population is much more sizeable.
Oh, really?
Although we are closer to Highland Park.
We're closer to Highland Park for most of that... I think that...
And Trinity.
And then so, yeah.
Trinity.
Roslyn as well.
Roslyn, like, of course.
In terms of colleges, yeah.
Yeah. Like, of course, high school, Highland Park, Deerfield. We have a lot of school families. I think something, especially about this industry, with the kind of cafe that we do, this kind of thing for this industry too, is that people like to discover something. And there's a little bit of charm finding that spot that, that is almost better for us not to be on the strip in a way. How, did, you know, when we looked at the spot, we were having flashbacks of looking at, looking at our location.
We've set ourselves up for a model that, that is a freestanding or a, you know, we do have one unit next to us that is an ice cream shop. It was in the firehouse. But we've set ourselves up with a brand and a, and a, and to be a standalone, to, to really stand out in a unique historic structure. And so, you know, we, we just love that about it. We, we just love that charm and that feel of, of what that's, what we've created with that at the firehouse. And, and those are the types of places that when we think about second cafes, we get excited about.
Keep going. You've got six minutes.
Go.
I showed up late. Do I get spanked or bent? Sure. Oh, that's amazing. Wow. It's awesome to be able to hear you guys.
Yeah, I apologize if I was unclear.
No, I, I, I get it.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you. First of all, it was an awesome presentation, and we're very lucky to have all of these. We're just very fortunate. Talk to me about why your product is better. You know, if someone is looking at Starbucks, let's just pick on Starbucks.
Sure. Yeah. Keith, this is your...
Yeah.
Keith is our roaster. You missed that part.
I want to hear my roaster guy.
I love to hear Keith talk about coffee. It's just beautiful.
Yeah. So I think what sets us apart is, first of all, our level of intentionality that is like one of our core values in everything that we do. And it starts from roasting coffee. So we work with some main importers that are getting their coffees, that they're going to origin. They're doing all due diligence to make sure that they're buying coffees that roasters like us want to purchase from them and that we want to serve. So it's kind of like this trickle-down effect of quality on quality on quality on quality. So by the time it even gets into our hands to make even a decision of what we want to even bring in to sample, it's at a pretty high level of quality that we know basically anything that we get is going to be at least to this level of standard, right? And so first of all, it comes with that sourcing. So we're sourcing excellent quality coffee. And then beyond that, it's the level of intention that we take as we roast our coffees to preserve that quality. So inherently, the largest part of what makes coffee, that's kind of rough to drink, is when it's darkly roasted, right? So you get a lot of bitterness. You need to drink it with cream and sugar. And part of it is when you're buying low-quality coffee, you can buy the same low-quality coffee and really high-quality coffee. If you roast them, they'll start, and you won't be able to tell the difference. But to be able to roast light is preserving what's inherently there. And so when you preserve that, you're also at risk of, you add, add it, right? So if you don't do a good job, you're either going to, like, all of those defects, all of the, I guess, like, everything that is bad about either what I do or about the quality is going to come out. So you're going to taste that even more in a little bit lighter of a roast. So I think that's the biggest difference is that we're able to preserve that quality in the way that we intentionally roast and then the way that we intentionally brew our coffees in the cafe, right? So kind of at every level, from farm to the point that it's us, to the point it's roasted, to the point it's our cafe, there's all of this level of intentionality that's conceived through the entire process. And it gets us there.
And the execution of the drinks. We decide on a drink and a recipe. I make all the syrups in-house at our roastery. I take great pride in doing so. From all of them, from our, our simplest bourbon vanilla, which is our signature latte, to our specialty drinks that we come up with as a team. We, we, we grab those ingredients, we puree, we curate them, and we transfer them in intentionally to these repeatable, and also with the repeatable process, measuring out the amount of that's in. So when you come to Tallahassee, which I tried to speak on in the beginning, when you come there and you want the Mermaid or you want the Bourbon Vanilla Latte, and because last time you had it, it was amazing. You get it again, and it's the same. You keep getting that because it's a repeatable process. We're not, we're not taking shortcuts there. We're measuring things out. We're weighing things out, down to brewing, down to drinks, everything like that. So you couple that with the sourcing and the roasting. That's what sets us apart.
Which Starbucks does have a high level of consistency, but to think about a high level of consistency across the entire globe, they have to source very poor-quality coffee. They have to over-roast it. They have to get their syrups full of chemicals and different, different things to preserve that consistency. So it is consistent, which is great, but it's consistently subpar, and that is the difference.
I think what sets us apart and what makes us different, what makes our coffee different, is our level of experience in the industry from all of our respective roles that we have seen really what works. We've seen what customers like and what they don't like. We also have a huge passion for it personally. And so when that passion is driving what's behind your business, like, you're kind of, like, inherently, like, selfishly, I want to roast really, really good coffee. Just want to drink really, really good coffee.
That's what we drink.
So there's like a huge part of that where, like, if you don't have the passion behind it, you're probably not going to care. It would be as intentional. But like, when I know that I'm bringing my own coffee back home, I don't want to sit at the coffee at home. Like, I want to do as best I can selfishly, but it's really awesome to be able to, like, have everyone else engage with it. And then, like, say the same thing, like, hey, yeah, that is, that is really good. And so, like, I think that's a huge part of it. So when the passion and the expertise is behind it, it really sets you up for something.
Joanna mentioned too, we, we take that all the way to the layout. They've worked in cafes that are not efficient. We specifically designed the layout of our cafe to be super-efficient so we can, if somebody orders a pour-over, you're not like, oh, my God, I'm going to make a pour. It's very easy thing. Make a pour-over. It's, pour-over is one of the best ways to enjoy a clean cup of coffee. If you haven't had one, I encourage you to try one. But it's not for everyone. There's also a great delicious batch for it. But you need to make these things accessible, easy for your employees to do because no one wants to do it with pain, you know? So we have things that we can even improve on from our Highwood Cafe. We transfer that over here. Very intentional in all the things that we do. I think that's what we're trying to say in summary.
Okay, one more question. One more question. Anybody have one?
I was going to say, I just want to make, you, you want, you want this to be a location that people hang out in? Do I understand that inherently? I mean, obviously, you want to go home by coffee, leave whatever. But you want it to be a place that people can come, do their homework, do their work, take a spot, be there for forty-five minutes to an hour.
I mean, we built our cafe in Highwood with seventy seats. I was like, what, what is happening here? Do we, we need seven? It's, it'd be pre-pandemic, every seat was full on a Saturday and Sunday. You could not, we were actually losing customers because we're trying to figure out, okay, we need more outdoor seating. How do we push these buttons? So yes, we want people to hang out there. Inherently, people are going to come and go. People are going to hang out. We want, we welcome all. Hundred percent.
One quick one. By the way, you talk about coffee the way I used to talk about brewing when I was at Anheuser-Busch. It's like, people thought I was a little weird, but that's, that's, I get it. You're a marketing person, so I, I kind of, you said a statement that I haven't got to call you on, which is, Winnetka is the perfect fit. Why is Winnetka the perfect fit?
Yeah. So I think that the different, the things that we look for, Ryan touched on a little bit of it, but this spot in particular is, some of the, the things that we look for is a little bit of an underdeveloped area. Like, that's what, what we're kind of looking for, to come up on the beginning end of something that is sort of starting up, if that makes sense. Obviously, there's a lot of strong development around it, which is also very helpful. But it is a little bit up and coming in the Indian Hill District, and so we find that really helpful. The, one of the things that was really interesting about this spot in particular is the pedestrian traffic because the, the parking is a little bit less. But to know that there's a lot of pedestrian access, that's been a huge, that is a huge draw to this location specifically. Of course, there's, we, the median income in Winnetka being what it is, is also very helpful. We know people do have the money to have some expendable and like fancier coffee, that they're going to walk home, walk out with a bag of coffee. And that was honestly something we weren't sure about in Highwood, and it's worked out for us. But we weren't sure if that was going to be something that was going to work out there. And so we are confident in all of those things. And then even just like the little things that matter, like the proximity to the Green Bay Trail. We, again, didn't know that this was going to happen, but we have such a strong cyclist community in our cafe that is very robust and crazy that we weren't really prepared for. Thinking, you know, we didn't even put bike racks in until recently. But, but that's why this does seem really appealing because it's close to that. We know that, you know, people are going to come for that reason. So there's, there's a lot of the little things that add up that make that a perfect fit.
And we are at a price point too. We're, we're not overpriced. We are very comparable to Starbucks. It is just a superior product at a similar price point. And so it's not, you know, obviously, the median income is fantastic, and it's great to have people be able to go out and get drinks and take their families out. And that's what you need to have successful businesses, is have people out in the towns. And so, yeah, those, all, all of those factors that Joanna matched and factored into, when we say it's a perfect fit, it's not just a cliched statement. We really do feel like, we've been looking a long time for a second cafe location, and this one checks a lot of the boxes for us.
Thank you. Great. That's great. Well, I'm sorry to say that your time is up. It's been, it was a fantastic presentation. Thank you so much for your time.
Well done.
And you'll be hearing from David in, in the weeks to come.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, let's take a five-minute, and then we'll bring firecakes up. So if you guys got stuff you want to get ready, you can do it now.
Coffee, doughnuts.
Oh, terrible. Are you going to try this? To the drive-in?
I think I'd, yeah.
I feel like you're trying to...
I think I'm required to just go in the town. My garage is full of stuff. I think so. Yeah, I think it'll be a lot.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. When I get inside and I can find, right, how many, I was so getting nervous because there was no place to sit. And how many people do you work with? Oh, I work there. I work out there all the time. And it's like when you think about, you know, shopping, right? We don't have a lot of that. Yes. Yeah. Well, you know, I've heard about that, like, baby's, because their ticket price is totally good. So I'm sure they... No, that, I was just like, I saw all the pictures, like, men, single men. And instead of that car, we've been had, you know, either a center or that car wishing that... There's a big high-top table that's like in the middle, more or less in the middle. Yeah, my partner and I, we're fair. We, we have an office in Northfield. Yeah. But we, we work, we get a coffee, we sit down, we eat, we, we coffee, and we start meeting, like, on these days, nine-thirty with a coffee. Turns into lunch, right? Then we go to lunch.
That's where it all starts.
Coffee, too. Well, and honestly...
There's people in my time. That's why you're established here.
I don't, I actually do it. I've always been too scared of the car here. I recognize the other cars. Really interested. All the time we're going to meet. No, I know. Me, too. But if Joseph ate bacon, which is a thing, I don't know where they're from. There's no, like, a, a spirit always comes to life. And they're sharing the grateful lights at certain times.
That's it?
But you know where you should... It has empty lot next to it, turned into a...
Depends on how quickly we would expedite.
I think they own the building still, right?
I would say...
You should hammer in.
March, April.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be strange.
But it's, it's tricky. It works for time, though, it's real.
We just assume that it can start tomorrow too, which, you know, that's not the case, so we are government after all. Even, even good government takes a long time.
I know. Tuesday. It's so early. I should, by the time, I obviously...
I don't think we have any issues with Ida.
And I know that.
If we don't fiddle with the curve, that's...
Change of use of the truck or require Ida.
Good point. So, all right, trustee, you have the topics back, so good to go. David?
Quickly, so our next presentation is from Fire Cake Craft Donuts. And let me introduce the founder and president, Jonathan Ba.
Mask can come off?
Yep.
If they grab a water, so.
That works.
You got to take that one off, too. Okay. Anyways, well, first of all, I want to thank you for selecting us to be here this evening. And we're super excited to present to you our vision of firecakes and why we think ninety-three Green Bay is the perfect location for what we do. I want to start with a slide of where it all started. This is our River North location that we opened in two thousand thirteen. Couple hungry folks waiting to get in. And then I'd like to talk a little bit about our team and start by introducing myself and give you a little background of my experience, my industry experience, and then introduce our development team, and then we'll get into our story. I've been in the restaurant business for over thirty-five years. When I was a kid, I had a passion for cooking, and I pursued my passion by attending the Culinary Institute of America in Hyde Park, New York. I graduated with high honors and came back to Chicago and worked at La Francais with Jean Bonchet in Wheeling, Illinois, for a couple of years, where I kind of cut my teeth and started to familiarize myself with what the, the life of a chef was going to be. and, and hone my skills. A couple of years later, I joined Rich Melman as the executive chef of The Pump Room, and, and that was right about the time when Rich was opening The Eccentric with Oprah Winfrey, so that was kind of my claim to fame of stepping into that opportunity. I worked there for a couple of years, and Rich approached me to develop a couple brands with him, and made me a partner. And we developed two national brands, Maggiano's Little Italy and The Corner Bakery Cafe. I developed specifically with a very talented team as one of the original opening partners. Maggiano's is a concept, and we built it over thirty-eight units across the country. I was the chief operating officer for thirteen years. I evolved from the culinary side to the business side of things, and, and that was just an absolutely amazing experience. In two thousand five, I decided to move back to Chicago and open a consulting company. And we started to consult, and we still consult to this very day. We have a, a very successful consulting firm. It's a small boutique firm that we do consulting throughout the country, focused a lot of, of our energy here in the suburbs of Chicago as well. In two thousand thirteen, as I indicated, we opened our first Fire Cakes. And today, we have four locations of Fire Cakes. We recently opened in Naperville a couple of weeks ago, and that's been going fantastic. We're super thrilled with that project. So that's a little bit about myself. I'm a Weneka resident. I've, I've lived in Weneka, three blocks from here for over fifteen years. I have two lovely girls that went through the Nutriere school system, and both of them have moved on to college and, and to pursue their careers. So we, we are engaged in the community, understand Weneka. We're consumers, active consumers. We support small businesses here in Weneka, and we, we're excited to hopefully be one of those small businesses. With that, I'd like to introduce our development team. And let me just flip that down. So Mitch Golds?
Excuse me, this is, this is John Shubman, but I'm Mitch Golds, founder and principal of GW Properties. We're, we're one of the most active retail developers in the Chicaguan area. We're big and small. We're redeveloping Church Street Plaza and Downtown Evanston right now, which includes the movie theater and three, three other properties over there to reactivate that, as well as a lot of local restaurants in the Chicaguan area. So we're very excited to partner up with John and the Fire Cakes team to bring together a very collaborative approach towards development, bringing all of our expertise and experience, working with a variety of concepts, you know, across the country actually, to put together the right mix of product and design for this location. So I'm not, I'm not the chef, I'm not the designer of, of the brand, but we're definitely very happy to be part of it, and think we can bring a strong piece of the puzzle on the financing, construction, and expertise on just how to, how to make sure it's a, it's a successful location for the long term.
Did you do Naperville as well?
Uh, we did Washington Corners and Downtown Naperville as well, so. That's, the Barnes and Noble there, but Church Street Plaza is our, our very exciting active project. Movie Theater will be opening soon for those who found there, so it's, we're very excited about that. And I'd like to introduce Anthony Campani, part of the development team as well.
My name is, first of all, thank you for the opportunity for Fire Cakes. My name's Anthony Campani. I am the, I told Robert in the bathroom, the least important person in the room. I'm simply Jonathan's real estate broker. He has been anxious to open up a location on the North Shore. I've grown up in the North Shore, in Hywood, actually. I'm a frequent Tala customer, so kudos, guys. All love here. And Jonathan tasked me with finding a true flagship opportunity in, along the North Shore, and that's somewhat of a difficult task. I would say there's only, you know, three suburbs along the North Shore where you could build something that can speak to a brand and that can allow you to, to build a brand in the way Jonathan has, has built Fire Cakes and would like to continue to build Fire Cakes. So I had stalked Liz for a while during COVID to find out what was going on with this property. And finally, here we are, and again, we're excited about the opportunity and hope we can obviously make something happen. But we believe that this would truly be a, you know, flagship opportunity, and flagship just doesn't mean big, it means impactful. I've actually, I represented Apple on their deal on Michigan Avenue, and that's, that's something else, but, you know, we often ta- talk about flagships with smaller retailers in Lincoln Park and elsewhere, where they could just make, make an impact on the community and, and elevate their brand. And that's what we believe Fire Case can do here at Ninety-three Green Bay Road.
Thank you, Anthony. I'll drop this down. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, that helps. Thank you.
So putting this team together from a development perspective was really important to me, because one of the things, if we have the opportunity to work together, is I'm a big collaborator. And I'm a really, a stickler for quality and making sure that we align ourselves with partners that have common values. And I have a tremendous amount of respect for these two gentlemen, and I recognize what we do. We do certain things really, really well, and there are, there are things that we don't do well, and I like to align myself with people that complement what we do, so we can bring the best experience possible with Fire Cakes, so. As I said, I started this Italian restaurant with Rich, Maggiano's in River North, and I spent a lot of time there. And thirteen years into it, when I started my own company, I had seen this small barber shop on Hubbard, and it was a shoebox of, of a space, and I recognized an opportunity. And my wife and I talked about what we could do in this space, and my wife and I grew up together, went to high school together, been married for thirty-five years next month. And one of the things that we shared throughout our entire lives is donuts. And donuts were a big thing in Wisconsin where I grew up. And so the trend hadn't really started, but we said, let's do a donut shop. That would be great. That would be fun. And so we were able to get the spot and develop Fire Cakes. And, you know, when we first opened Fire Cakes, it was strictly a donut shop. That's what we did. And we opened in the morning and closed in the afternoon. And we opened to rave reviews, and it was successful beyond what I ever imagined. But the one thing I recognized was that donuts are something that, if you do them well, they don't just serve that morning consumer. They become a dessert, a treat, a dessert replacement after dinner or late night. And so over the years, as we looked at the, the business and the business evolved, we recognized that we needed to innovate. We needed to create a, a different platform that would allow us to address all the day parts. So we introduced ice cream, two years after we opened. And we had this idea of creating a donut ice cream sandwich. Lo and behold, we extended our hours, and today, this very day, we do fifty percent of our business in coffee, donuts, and ice cream after four o'clock. That's a city location. That's in River North. We're not in River North. But one of the things that we've learned as we've grown the brand over the years, that each, each trade area is different. Suburbs act differently than the city. And as we, we've opened in Oak Park, we opened in Naperville, we have a Lincoln Park location as well. We've learned something a little different from each location. And one of the things that we have realized, and as an entrepreneur, is that we need to innovate, that we need to continue to, you know, create items that are going to be a destination. So that's kind of our story behind Fire Cakes. As I said, we're family-owned. My wife and I own the concept. We live in Weneka here. And we're also, our vision for Fire Cakes is not to be the largest, but we just want to be the best. We want to be a leader in whatever we do. And so, you know, we've been recognized over the years by Martha Stewart, Bon Appetit. I'm just going to read a couple. I'm very proud of these as a chef and a restaurateur. Food and Wine USA Today, Travel and Leisure, as one of the best in the business, and we're super proud of that. And we're passionate about focusing on excellence, and that's really what we do. And part of our philosophy in, in focusing on excellence is all about the product. I have a huge respect for people that are passionate about their craft and passionate about their trade. But I believe, particularly in our business, that it all starts with the product. And so we go to huge lengths to procure local ingredients, organics, partner with local partners that have similar, common values as we do. And that's a big part of the core and soul of what we do at Fire Cakes. I talked a little bit about donuts and ice cream, and how we address all-day parts. And I think that that's really important for this particular location, because I, I believe that having a concept that works for Nutriere is important, but also to support the greater community. And if you think of donuts, you think of breakfast, but craft donuts, gourmet donuts with Rona chocolate and different creative applications, it truly becomes a dessert. And so people look at that as a, as a dessert replacement. We want to be that place, and we are that place in this city, and we want to be that place in Weneka, where after a ballgame, people are going to come and get a donut ice cream sandwich or have a coffee. The whole social ability of all the foods and our brand overall is a huge part of our enthusiasm about being here in Weneka, and particularly at that location. Our vision is to address, you know, open at six-thirty in the morning, and we feel during the summer, we could be open till ten or eleven o'clock at night. If you look at other ice cream places or dessert places, people need a place to go, and we think that there's a real void. One of the other things about what we do is, these are just a couple of the menus. I'm going to back up for one moment. These are a couple of the menus, and we talked a little bit about aligning ourselves with partners that have common values. And we recently partnered with Sparrow Coffee Roasters. And they're a craft roaster. They serve more Michelin-star restaurants with coffee than any other coffee brand in the world. They ship across the country. And so what we did is we went to Sparrow knowing that what we wanted, and we want, wanted to go to one of the best roasters that we've found available in the city. And we worked with them to create coffee blends that pair with our donuts. So what we've done is we've developed a coffee blend, single-origin, different roasts that pair with our seasonal menu that evolves every month. We also see a savory opportunity, particularly in this location. We've done it in some of our suburban locations in Oak Park specifically. We've done it in Lincoln Park as well. The core of what we do is donuts, but we have an opportunity, and our innovative spirit and our passion for food is to constantly reinvent and, and make little changes and, and adapt, always staying true to the core of who we are. And so something like a chicken sandwich is, we feature on weekends in some of our locations from time to time, and we see this as being a limited savory menu here in this particular location. And here's just a couple items as examples of what we would develop for this market. Everything we do is homemade. We make our ice cream, we make our donuts, our glazes, our fillings, everything. And we talked about the adaptability, and I think what we've learned over the years and my team of culinary folks and operators that I have behind me, which a few of them were in our original presentation. You know, we have adaptability. We understand how to read the marketplace and, and moving trends. We're not a trend. Donuts have been here for a real long time. But what we are is, to, what our goal is, is to strive to be the best in this, in segment, and, and that's our objective. And, you know, innovating and not only doing ice cream, but doing a donut ice cream sandwich. This is a a truro donut with a doce de leche ice cream as an example. This is our wildflower honey glaze. We get big five-gallon buckets of honey from an apiary in Indiana, just across the state line. The pumpkins come from Klug Farm. You know, I'll tell you a story. I had a, I have a new, a new baker that came in, and they were ordering pumpkins. And they sent me a text and said, hey, the, the farm doesn't have any help to deliver, so they're not delivering. They have the pumpkins, but they don't deliver. I said, listen, the question isn't if, the question is how. How do we get the pumpkins? And so they went and picked up the pumpkins, and, and, you know, it's just, you know, responding to circumstances and being committed to your craft and, and quality is, is really what it's about, and it's supporting local. Here's some fun stuff we do. Valentine's Day, Fat Tuesday, Mardi Gras. Our birthday cake donut is on the right, serves two to three people, double, double-stack donut decorated, comes with candles, box. We just like to have fun, and we like to showcase what we do, and these are a couple of examples of that. We also cater. Catering is a big part of our business. This is a donut wall. We do suite tables and weddings. Delivery is a big part of our business. We deliver. One of the pivots that we made during the pandemic is when, when things started to tighten up and close down, and they restricted indoor dining and whatnot, we really took a step back and, and looked at how we operate. And some of what we've learned from COVID will never go away. And behavior tendencies and how our guests view dining and convenience will be with us forever. It might rebound, it might change, it will change. But, you know, we've really studied that, and we ended up adding two walk-up windows at our Lincoln Park location and our River North location. And as many, many people did, implemented touchless payment. We added that where people could preorder. We have a very robust POS system that allows us the ability to preorder, manage our inventory. And we think that that lends itself really well to Nutriere and students bringing in donuts to home, to their, their classes and whatnot, and other schools beyond just Nutriere. And so the ability to cater, whether it's party trays with little mini donuts, filled or unfilled, donuts by the dozen, or we can take our little food truck, which is a nineteen sixty-eight Citron. It's, has three cylinders and takes about a day and a half to get up to Weneka, but it's possible. We have flat, we're flat betting it for a guest in, in Glencoe over Halloween. Talk a little bit about the site plan, and I'm going to have Mitch chime in, but the, the one thing that we'd like to highlight is
Excuse me.
The logo was not intentional. And I'll turn it over to Mitch to talk a little bit about our thinking and strategy behind this site layout.
Yeah, sorry about the logo, it didn't, didn't convert properly, but, you know, similar to some of the other presentations here, you know, we, we really do want to activate not only the building, but the outdoor space around it, and we would like to work with Weneka, the landscaping department, engineering department, to, to create a nice streetscape that will, will take into consideration, you know, our space into the, into the public space. You know, we do, would like to have some of the parking spaces available for in-and-out type use. We're open to reconfiguring of the, the public lot to the south, but we, we do have- type use. We're open to reconfiguring of the public lot to the south, but we do have really good ideas to reuse some of the materials on the building. We won't know what the condition of it is until you actually start to unpeel it, as I've learned from, you know, many, many renovations. You don't know what you have until you figure it out, kind of thing. But we do want to use indoor, outdoor space. We will renovate the building, put some garage doors. Wait, this is what the interior would likely look like. A lot of reclaimed elements, reclaimed wood. We'd like to find other materials, either, you know, sourced locally, but also find things that can accentuate the brand, as well as bring out some of the character of the original building, bringing on some bright colors. This is one of the proposed elevations facing Green Bay Road. Take the garage doors, replace them with, you know, workable windows, possibly some garage doors. You know, reclaimed wood, a lot of ivy on the building, landscaping along the streets, look to have a fire pit, if allowed by Winnetka, as well as a pergola and some other elements that can be used indoor and out, indoor and outdoor, you know, year-round. I think Fred's in Winnetka has done a great job of finding, you know, ways to innovate during the winter, and then found ways to use it throughout the year. So, we would like to use that space. We do believe this will be a gathering space, both after school, after work, even midday. But as John said, a lot of his, a lot of the business from Firecakes comes at surprisingly off-hours, but having many locations, you able to found ways, find ways to keep people in the location and come back for other ways. So, you may be coming in the morning for a coffee, come back in the afternoon for a sandwich or ice cream or whatnot. So, we will like to, you know, having catering parties outside, you know, the areas would be large enough to have, you know, 50, 60 people, maybe more. So, we look, we look to find ways to activate it at hours where maybe it's not peak for the area. These are some of the flat elevations, which as I said, we'll really have to investigate the building condition once we can start to peel back the onion here. But have found ways to bring in some bright colors, accentuate some of the brand elements, and really bring back some of the old character that the building had a long time ago, but reactivate in a way where it will be here for generations to come.
Yeah, no, just really quickly, one thing I think that hasn't been stressed, and one of the, one of the reasons why Jonathan is so excited about this opportunity, is the placemaking setting and the gateway to this community that it already is, but it's almost, it just hasn't been obviously like reborn to be, to be what it is. So, we've sort of glossed over it, but it's, it's really important to note that in our decision to be here and why we, why we're so interested, is because we do see this as a community, almost like the epicenter of a community, where people could come meet, not only for breakfast or coffee, but after school, whether it's meeting a tutor, or, you know, meeting friends, and then to meet after a baseball game, or some, you know, or a sporting activity. This, we see this as a true, you know, a, an opportunity to take roots in a community, and not only to build a, to build a brand, but to service the community that we've all been a part of, and that's been overlooked for some time. So, while we're still exploring the sort of physicalities of it, the obvious is that it's just great real estate, and it's, you know, we're, anyone should be very excited to breathe life into it.
Thanks, Anthony. Thanks, Mitch, as well. I think, I want to go back and just highlight this. This is the prototype that we've developed for Winnetka in terms of layout. This is, we did a kind of a time-motion study, and we kind of looked at our throughput. We think being close to Nutria, that we're going to have some significant peaks in business at certain times of the day, and one's ability to, A, be able to take pre-orders and run those guests through, and have the product ready for people to pick up. And one of the things that we didn't highlight on the exterior shot is, our intention, if allowed, is to have a walk-up window as an option, where pre-orders and deliveries would be picked up, just to address the potential congestion and backflow from the significant peaks of the thousands of kids coming out of Nutria. And then, the other thing I think worth pointing out is, in terms of the gateway, and we talked about the brand serves all-day parts, and we cater, but no one does what we do up here. And we also believe that coffee in this location is a powerful thing. It's very social. How many meetings are had over coffee and whatnot. But when you combine what we do and the craft of what we do at the level we do it, and our commitment to staying true to that, and our experience of replicating and growing a brand without losing its essence and its soul, we have every confidence in the world that we're going to be able to deliver the value and the quality proposition that I know the local residents want and deserve. And we're super excited about that. Just talk a little bit about the community and the market trends. Our core demographic is 15 to 35 years old. It's slightly trends to female. Eighty percent of our user base is within that demographic, which really plays to, A, Nutria, but the young families within the community as well. And we also think that the market is underserved with no one doing what we do, that we have every confidence that we're going to draw from the neighboring communities. It's one of the things that we learned in Naperville, is after we had opened, and I spent a lot of time in the, in the, in the shop, people were thankful that we had actually opened there, so they didn't have to drive to Oak Park or downtown to get their donuts and ice cream, donut sandwiches and whatnot. So, so we have a high degree of confidence that not only do we address the immediate need in that gateway piece, but we know that we're going to be a destination because we've proven that in our other locations. And we think that it will really utilize that space well. Project timeline. Once the bid process concludes and the project is awarded, we're ready to move. We've got our teams. From a design perspective, construction and development, you know, we've talked a lot about engaging and getting this going. Our hope would be late spring. Our expectation is sometime in the early summer. But absolutely, our goal would be to open before the school year of 2022. Some imaging. And then, before we open it up to questions, you know, for over 10 years, we've honed our brand and what we do. And what we do is unique, and no one else is doing it, and we really want to bring it to our hometown here in Winnetka. And I hope you agree.
Thanks, Jonathan. That's awesome.
You're welcome.
All right, guys. Go ahead, Kim.
Thank you so much for the presentation.
Yeah.
Awesome. I was curious about two things related to your floor plans. One, do you have floor plans?
I'm sorry?
Do you have floor plans you could share with us?
Um, we do not have
Dan Ryan.
We don't have floor plans in particular, in particular of the space. And let me tell you, our methodology is, we, as, when we first started the RFP, we were in the, in the middle of a study, understanding how to better utilize space and throughput, and we wanted to get that data from our learning. And so, if awarded, you know, we will take the best of our learning in this particular space. But what we do know is that the footprint and the size is ideal for our use.
Do you, and that said, would you have onsite cooking?
Yes.
Would you need a kitchen?
Yes.
And then, given that, I don't know how large a kitchen would need to be for the menu items you have.
Approximately 20% of the footprint.
So, what's the estimate roughly of how many seats you'd have inside?
Interior or out here?
Interior.
Interior. We're thinking there's going to be in the neighborhood of 40.
Okay, thanks.
And some would be common seating, and others, and we've done this in a number of our different cafes, some banquet seating really gives you the flexibility. And another part of our vision for the interior is, and Mitch touched on, you know, reclaimed natural textures, that really is a big part of our identity. But we also understand the need for Nutria students, tutors, becoming a social gathering place where people are on their computer and whatnot, that it will highly be integrated with technology in terms of Wi-Fi and those types of things.
Thank you.
You made note very quickly about, you know, sometimes you made a chicken sandwich. Is that randomly done, or is that every day, or how do you decide if you do that?
We do many random things. It's part of our creative process, and quite frankly, as a 56-year-old chef and restaurateur, frankly, it just satisfies me personally to throw out beignets made to order out of our service window, things like that. Our intention is to have a savory menu, a limited albeit, but a savory menu, and chicken would be a part of it. It's a proven, it's a proven item, and we had a huge filing, and we do bring it back from time to time, but it's not permanent in our other cafes.
In other locations, is anything other than donuts for breakfast, any kind of sandwiches or?
Yeah. So, so, we do homemade yogurts, both a la carte and catering. We do fruit trays for catering, fresh squeezed orange juice and lemon juice. We hand squeeze our juices in most of the locations, not 100% of all the locations, but in most of our locations, and our intention would be to do hand-pressed juices up here as well. And then, we also do a homemade Greek yogurt, kind of a fruit yogurt parfait and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah. If I could just interject one other quick thing. One of the things that we talked, we learned from the pandemic is the whole, whole market piece. And, you know, there was a period of time where you went to the store and you couldn't get flour, and we had plenty of flour. And so, we kind of pivoted and created this small market at our Lincoln Park location, a neighborhood location. And my expectation would be that this would be similar in many ways because of its nature of being a neighborhood, not a business district. And, and, and through that, we kind of got creative, and we said, well, flour, yeah, we can give our guests flour as a convenience, and we can create convenience items like rubber gloves and napkins and paper, and all the things that you couldn't get on the, on the shelf, but that's not going to last. And so, how do we get creative and make it us? And so, we started to package the honey that we get from the farm, offer farm eggs, you know, locally churned butter. We would take some of our icings, or our hot fudge or things, and brand them, and sell them in a market environment. And it really just kind of aligns our commitment to quality, and it was very successful, and we're going to continue to develop that concept here in Winnetka.
But part of your, part of your thoughts on your laser focus on what you do well, which you really talked about, which I think is the reason why you are so successful, I got to believe that no matter what other menu items you have, 99.9% of your revenue is off of donuts and coffee.
And ice cream.
And ice cream. I mean, those, those kind of the three things.
Yeah. I can give you the breakdown, but I'll let you finish your
No, I was, I got, I'm just curious, because I, I think we're, we want to play to your strengths, obviously.
Sure.
And force fit something to you, so I
Right.
Your comp, your zone is kind of the donuts and ice cream and coffee and
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, you know, our chicken sandwiches are proven, so we've been very successful with them. And like I said, we offer them from time to time. Our average ticket is 16, 15 suburban, and it's 14 and change, small change, in the city. So, our ticket average is quite significant, and that's largely due to a couple of things. First of all, we sell boxes of donuts, and as we progress up from a half dozen box, which you have here, and a full dozen box, the value increases. So, we discount a half dozen by 10, 12%, a full dozen by 15, 16%. So, that drives ticket average. But we sell 15% beverage, 12% ice cream, and the balance in donuts. And then, we also have a retail component, but that's really more of a marketing thing. We're not looking to make money on our, on our retail at this point.
I was trying to wrap my head around the donut and ice cream sandwich.
Yeah.
Are your restaurants equipped with heart paddles?
No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. No calories. Don't worry about it. We tell people it's okay.
Sounds like you're going to get one of those.
However, you know, we do have a broad offering. We offer vegan products. We offer gluten-free products. We have a, we have a vegan ice cream available all the time. We're highly, you know, using farmers and local ingredients and vendors and purveyors has allowed us to really express our creativity through seasonality. And so, on our donut menu and ice cream menu, 50% is core, and 50% changes, 40 to 50% changes every single month. So, we keep people interested. We keep them going back. Their favorites are always there, but there's always something new.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Can we talk about the logistics of traffic flow like we did with Kala?
Sure.
Traditional presentation had the same 10 spots, not using the parking lot. You came back and installed the 10, 10 spots, which circulation-wise seems challenging. Do you think ultimately you want to use the parking area, or?
I think, you know, you know, being, you know, primarily in the retail restaurant sector, we're, we're always, you know, asked with questions on the park. I think we'd want to work with the village on what the capabilities are to flip the pattern of traffic. I think the peak hours, you know, there could be more cars coming in. I think as much as it is, you know, sit and stay for a long time, there's a lot of in-and-out, which is why we'd want to designate some of the spaces, you know, 10 or 15-minute parking. You know, we do work with a lot of Starbucks. They have the mobile online pickup order where those spots are turning regularly. So, we would like to work with the village engineer on what capabilities exist. I mean, rerouting the entire parking lot, you know, may be a big task, maybe it's not, but, and we would like to work on, on making sure that enough parking is available on a regular basis, but not messing around with, you know, the peak hours for all the people coming in the morning to pick up with the train. So, I think, you know, are we going to ever have, you know, 60 cars in there at a given time? Probably not. I think a lot of the customers that we'd be looking to get in the morning are going to be parking there anyways to go to the train, grabbing what they need to, and going. So, we would work with the village and then look at the traffic patterns on the street. We don't want congestion. We want to be in a safe environment, but we think, you know, the 10 to 12 spaces in front should adequately serve the in-and-out customers on a regular basis. We would not be using those spaces for employees, so those would be available for customers on a regular basis. So, you know, believe it or not, as many drive-throughs as we do for Starbucks and other businesses, they're actually seeing more business in the in-and-out, because it's actually, I mean, I know for me, picking up coffee is way faster, just to order online. You leave the car on, you're back in your car in 30 seconds, and you're gone. So, I think consumer behavior is changing, and there will be people that will be walking here and will stay, but we would work with the village on figuring out an optimal plan to allow functionality at all hours of the day.
But you don't see, you don't see that as overwhelming hurdle to
I don't think so. I mean, as much as that we will look at this as a destination, I mean, you're, I think it's, it's a bit of a stretch. I think people are driving 10 miles, you know, or five miles to come here in a given morning. I mean, these are people that are driving through here anyways. Hopefully, they're already parking, or they're already walking to the school or the train. So, you know, we don't see there being an overwhelming intensity where it's going to get backed up, but I think working in partnership with Winnetka, if it did run into an issue, you know, all the parties can come to the table pretty quickly to figure out a solution, but I think we'd want to first kind of get in there and see how it goes, see the traffic patterns, you know, watch it closely, and with the village, watching as well, and if we uncover an issue, figure out how to work through it. But usually, these are things that, as much as you want to plan ahead for it, you don't know what you're going to deal with until you actually get in there and see it. So, in this particular case, we think there's things that we want to address upfront, but there's things that we kind of would wait to see if it really needs anything more substantial to be changed.
I would just add one other comment on the space allocation. First of all, we want to be good partners, and so, our willingness and desire to collaborate to make the best decisions when it comes to these particular things, not that we haven't thought about it. I don't want to send the wrong message. We have thought about it. And our goal is that we are a destination. Our goal is that there's traffic. One of our thoughts, just to highlight and came up in a couple of our conversations, was to utilize some of those immediate spots to encourage pre-ordering, so there's not congestion. And so, And so between handicap and online pre-order pickup, if we can accommodate those spaces and if you are open and the village is, and we understand they are, we just don't know what it's going to look like from a, a flow pattern, we're very open and embrace the idea of changing the flow to have natural overflow parking. So hopefully that answered your question.
Tina.
Yeah. Wonderful presentation, this is killing me. Having them like, one of my cases smells so, they really do.
Thank you. You're welcome, thank you.
It's so great to have everybody so happy.
It's not killing me. Thank you. Oh, you know.
I could make a comment about your party of tennis game. Okay, so I have an operational question. I am a veteran, a future parent and typically, you know, the big thing in future used to be, I don't know if this is now happening, but your kids will tell you at twelve o'clock at night or eleven o'clock that they're responsible for bringing donuts to the advisor.
I've been there, by the way.
So it just still happens and so then you're like, what do I do? Oh, that means I have to go up to Dunkin' Donuts at five AM and pray that nobody else has gotten that same message, which inevitably there's always like fifteen people, right? You know, and it's just a very in and out, pick up the order, pray you got those donuts. Please be sure that you're going to be making that site up in your proposal, but tell me how operationally you handle the inevitable last minute orders and that rush. And then also how, you know, what I think we're trying to do is to create a sense of community. And I, you know, very familiar with the Wencov Dunkin' Donuts situation, where people just come in and come out, right? Can you talk a little bit, do you have an example of another location that's had as much, you know, outdoor seating, people hanging out, you know, that sort of thing?
Sure. Well, let me start with, with the last minute orders and our ability to accommodate them. I've also gotten that message late at night and I've also walked up to Panera with no option, so I think we've all been there. You know, one of the things that our POS and on the business side, we, we really monitor the data and the trends. And so what's happened to you happens often and we would track those trends and make sure we're managing our production levels for that availability. You know, we do have rolling productions and so that allows us the flexibility to adjust on the fly. And so, you know, we do sales projections and we have software that allows us to really determine what's selling, what's not selling, and it helps us innovate number one, but it also helps us address the consumer needs. You know, if we're running out of gluten-free at seven in the morning every day, then we have a problem because we have the data and we know what's happening at seven in the morning every day. So the rolling production and the data and how we analyze the data with our operations team has given us the experience where we adapt and have the capability to address it. Yeah, well, we do deliver, obviously.
I was gonna say, if you really want to make it easier.
So he's, Anthony's pretty good. Did you deliver these? No, okay. So that was the first part and, and refresh my memory on, on the, on the second point. You had two points to your question.
I've been to your River North location, very familiar with it, but I don't get the, you know, this is going to be different, right?
Oh, for sure.
You're trying to create not just a grab and go, you're trying to create some outdoor seating and space for the community. And so maybe how do you prevent with the walkout window and all those other elements and pre-ordering that it doesn't just become a place, and maybe it is just recognize that for a period of time and certain hours of the day, it will be a grab and go, but maybe, you know, try to create a place where people want to linger or.
Sure. Yeah, I think that came up earlier and I couldn't agree more. There, different day parts give you different tendencies and compute, and consumer patterns. In the morning, it's all about timing, convenience, early morning. And then there's going to be a, a shift to that. And so, you know, the, the, the new prototype that we kind of have been working on really is very, very efficient in terms of, of mapping out the different options and the selection process because if you have all these different varieties, the decision-making in itself sometimes gives you a backlog. And so, you know, we encourage the pre-ordering online, we encourage delivery when appropriate. But, you know, we have two registers, we have a team that, you know, our baristas are all linked to our POS and so they're making beverages and, and the efficiency is something that I don't want to say we completely have doubt, but we're pretty good at it and.
Well, I want to point out too, I mean, there's, there's a lot of ways to get the product into the hands of the consumer. So the grab and go, the mobile order, the pickup window, those are ways to get it, but by no means the only way. So if you want to go and sit there, there's that capability. I mean, people usually have their intention in mind when they're going to, to get any food. Do I want to sit down? Do I want to take it to go? Do I want to eat in my car? Do I want to, you know, grab it? So I think, you know, we want that sense of community, there'll be a lot of outdoor seating, a lot of indoor seating to, to handle that. The examples of some of the locations is really just to, to point out that there's versatility in the brand. You get people in for donuts, they come back for a sandwich, you get them in for coffee, they come back and they want a donut, so, or, or ice cream. So the, I think it will come down to a lot of the times of the day, but you can come in there, you can get there a variety of ways, on foot, on bike, on train, on car. You could stay for an hour, two hours, or you could be out in five minutes. I think keeping the, the flexibility to the consumer gets them in one way and then allows them to come back and experience the, you know, in a different way at some other time. So, I mean, if you want to get your coffee and go, you probably don't want to sit around for fifteen minutes, you probably want to get out. So I think, as John has attested, I mean, if you want to get out somewhere, you want to get out as fast as you possibly can. And I think most businesses were forced to evolve and innovate during COVID and a lot of those trends have continued going forward and they've, they've, a lot of companies have experimented in a variety of ways that many of those stuck and some of them haven't. I mean, curbside delivery, I think is the greatest thing to happen. You know, you, it's just, I don't need to go into certain places anymore. I can just wait in my car, what's the name, grab it, I'm gone. So I think, you know, the point is that there's a lot of ways to experience this that would, you know, stay or, or not.
I have one relevant point just to your question.
This will be the end then too, John.
Absolutely. And I'll make, I'll make it quickly.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The, the, the most important thing is that we're designed for that sociability. Our product lends itself really well to the sociability gateway, community gathering piece. Clearly there are going to be times of days when that peaks and doesn't based on the day parts that we talked about, but the most important is people will make that decision to make it a meeting place if it's laid out in a way that's inviting, just to make sure that we address it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you to you and your team. I really appreciate it and.
It's our pleasure.
We could go on like this forever, certainly, but we do have another respondent that we have to hear and appreciate your time and efforts. So thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Do we need a legal opinion on whether we can accept donuts?
Well, Ben.
Well, the evidence is, the evidence is.
Do you have the taste evidence?
Evidence is gone.
It's, it's, it's too late, it was, it was accepted already.
Evidence is gone, there's, I wonder what you're talking about.
I assume it's under fifty bucks.
Quick break and then we'll come back for the last, the last proposal.
That pink one is so good.
This one?
Yeah. It's really good.
Good, good, yourself.
This one's going here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, except for this isn't going to be.
So wherever it's going to be, it could be anywhere.
Yeah.
It could be anything.
That's a good, that's an interesting.
So you keep people away from it.
Yeah. That's a, I like that idea. I like this.
Just, just washware.
Totally.
The line is down the block.
Do you guys go to, do you work in a store?
No.
I knew it was some donuts.
I don't have any beer. And it wasn't in the smoke.
I was going to get a gartle, can I? Did you say?
This one for the old person.
I did, I had.
So I had a client recently and.
Were you about to say how good my tennis game was, is what you're trying to say?
And my son picked up every single one of those balls and ate them first. And it's like, the pink stuff, he called it chocolate. And then finally, he is very interesting. Thank you.
And never, I've had a promise.
So they, we collected it and Rick heard it.
I get to have that too. Those sound bad.
No, it sounds awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think they were.
Well, I have to ask if you know there's a donut plant in, in New York. Have you been to the donut plant in New York? Oh my God, it's legendary.
And then you get crispy greens.
Oh no, the donut, donut plant is, is like this, this is a custom.
It's for everyone to understand, like crispy greens are good.
Within six seconds.
Yeah.
Three, three seventy-nine Grand Street at Norfolk.
And so you can smell it.
Well, this, this is like a, this is a, it's, it's a religious experience. This place is like unbibled. I want to see if you know it, we're going to test it.
I'm going to hold off on that, Tina. It looks awesome.
It's sort of like that for me at night.
That's true.
Not good.
Not good for the sleep pattern.
Oh, really?
The mornings, I gotta take one to go.
It was one of those gray hours, lots of cowards. You're not getting that.
Is that right? So you'll have regular.
All right, what's shaking, Dave? How are you?
Okay.
So this, I just have to hit that button right there?
Or just right here.
Down?
Down.
Okay, what happens if I hit that, same thing? Okay.
Well, here, dry strung, yeah. I'll drink coffee.
Happy that Rick's up here.
Yeah.
Going in.
See, this is the decision, you know, that's what he was talking about, right? Yeah. That's a similar one.
That's what I thought. Maybe just. I could use, there's a knife in here. That's what I cut that with, the knife. So, yeah. Oh, you're wanting with those? That looks good too.
But I'm not going to cut it in half.
I don't blame you. Don't blame you.
It's all mine. So should we put those away for the best presentation?
No.
We can ask Michael if he'd like one.
I got some stuff.
Whoa, we're all here for, for the love anyway, so.
So we ready to get started again?
Yes, we are.
Chris and Liz. So I'd like to introduce Michael Madden. He is the CEO and owner of Left Coast Food and Juice and he'll present his concept.
Thank you, everyone, for having us today. And I got my friend Jeff Koransky here in the background and he's, he's my right hand and we've worked together for many years out in Scottsdale and now three years here in Chicago and he's also one of my best friends, so we're lucky to get to work together. So, all right, so what is Left Coast? Left Coast kind of began with an idea that healthy didn't have to be boring and bland. And when we came back to Chicago, I grew up here, I came from California, I came from Arizona, I came from Colorado, I guess I was a little spoiled just with the selections that you could find out there, it was a little bit easier to find a place that you didn't feel like a bowling ball after you, you got out of it. And so my wife and I were pretty underwhelmed when we came back and every place that people told us, hey, you're going to love it, it's, it's great, it just was, you know, you've missed Scottsdale, you missed California. So anyway, when you do it right, healthy can be both delicious and convenient. You know, we begin with a lot of the same things that these guys have been speaking about, like nutrition and sustainability and flavor, local and organic when we can. It's a chef-driven menu. I mean, this is a restaurant, this isn't a juicery, it's not a coffee shop. We are a full-service restaurant, we're casual service, but it's made from scratch. The menu is quite extensive, we've got stuff from all over the globe, breakfast, lunch, dinner, I think, wraps salads and bowls, kind of for the lunch, tons of breakfast offerings, really healthy, incredibly nutritious, tasty smoothies. We bottle our own cold-pressed juice that's a hundred percent FTA-certified organic, which there aren't too many in the Midwest that are able to do that. Coffee program and, and actually we have a full bar too. It's not the type of place where you'd go and get four gin and tonics, but it's, you know, a rosé with this food, it, it goes well, or a craft beer, it still kind of aligns with what we're trying to do. So our history, oh, sorry, here we go. We opened in twenty sixteen in Lincoln Park and I would say that that is the prototype for what we're going to see here in Weneka for a few reasons. The size and actually the transformation that we made there and really the community that's around it. You know, there are one to three million dollar walk-ups and it's a clientele that has a discerning taste and a, a level of expectations and, you know, they want their food their way and, and so, you know, we're able to do that quite well. You know, when I think of healthy, you know, I, I always want to eat healthy, right? I always hear myself saying, oh, I wish I could, you know, get something healthy. The reason why I probably don't most of the time is because it just doesn't taste as good. And, you know, if I could get Lou Malnati's every day, I, I would do that. And, you know, that's the problem. But what if you could have healthy food that tasted just as good as whatever you were, you know, whatever the alternative was? So that's really what we, we did. I was fortunate enough to work with one of the best chefs in the world, I'd be considered in the handful of the best. And so he, he's into vegetables and he's got some of the best restaurants here in Chicago. And I, you know, I showed him the concept and the business plan and he, you know, long story short, he, he created the original menu and he's got a garden at home, his wife does yoga for thirty-five years and so this is just something he really connected with. And we spent a good year really working on these recipes. And so it was, it was a really special, I've had a great career in, in this business in particular, but that six, seven, eight months with him, seeing basically Michael Jordan work, starting from a whiteboard like you might see in a tech company where they, you know, have everything spread out and it was just ingredients. And then we worked our way to like what the dish would be like and, you know, and then tasted them and threw out half of them and, and, you know, it was, it was actually probably the coolest thing I've ever done in this business. So yeah, breakfast, lunch, dinner, that's really key, I'd say, in this location in particular. You know, and I know people, they, they frequent, you know, coffee shops and, and donut places all, all day and that's really important, I think, for this spot, but we, we really do huge breakfasts, enormous lunches and enormous dinners. And because of the smoothies, because of the cold-pressed juice, because of the coffee program, we hit the in-between meal periods quite well too. So there's really not much of a break throughout the day and I think that's just great because it'll be activated and there'll be people constantly kind of visiting this new corner. You know, the people who we are targeting, our demographic, it's totally in line, I think, with Weneka and the greater North Shore. You know, a lot, a lot of the same people that we're talking about here, I mean, Indian Hill Club, that's up the street, that really hasn't been mentioned, but the gyms around here, you know, that whole corridor down Green Bay Road, there's probably six places and we, we've done juice in some of them, we've done coffee and avocado toast and smoothie bars for their special days, all the way from the city. So, you know, they know about us there and we're already actually coming up here. You know, work meetings, it's, it's totally an appropriate place to have an important work meeting. It has a feel, I like the feel of more of a cafe because you can kind of chill out and you have, you attract a different group of, like a wide spectrum of people. It's, it's, you know, you've got kids studying, you've got meetings over here, you've got ladies lunching, you've got families, you've got a guy trying to, you know, catch a train or a girl, you know, in a, in a rush. And that kind of energy, I think, really gets captured well at Left Coast. well at Left Coast. Yeah, so, you know, we're unique. There's really nothing that I can compare us to up here. And I'm tired of eating Panera, and I'm tired of, you know, another couple of places that are the only things I'd maybe say are close to Left Coast, but as a resident, I just, you know, I'm really looking forward to this, hopefully. It's a really important intersection for Winneka, shares the name of the city on, you know, one side of the street, and then Green Bay is probably the biggest north-south artery around. You know, I know you guys want it to be the third kind of business district, and, you know, there's not much of the auto, you know, operations going on there anymore. This is going to single-handedly overnight make that corner special. No question. You know, proximity to Nutria is fantastic, but it's not just Nutria, it's North Shore Country Day and another half dozen, you know, grade schools and, you know, even younger than that, like where my daughter goes. But, yeah, we want to create a space that people want to hang out in, actually spend time in. We'll talk about our app and, you know, how we push a lot of people through, so it's not always just dining. We're about 60% takeout right now across the board. You know, the design, we'll get into this, but we're planning to add turf for the community out front there. And even these steps to the patio, that's meant to be just communal kind of hangout. You can have food there, but you don't have to. You know, Adirondack chairs, I love the idea of a fire pit, I wasn't going to push that one, but I think it's great in the wintertime. But, you know, this is a somewhat challenging corner, I'd say, it's a somewhat unique sliver of real estate, and I think we captured enough of that element where we can have the Winneka signage, and we can, you know, appoint people to Nutria or the other business districts and have it a place that is going to be visited by lots of people. Let's see here. Yeah, the idea would be to remove that kind of barrier to the south, and I really liked that idea that was brought up on our onsite visit, that traffic pattern would start facing south, and hopefully, we could add about 20 more spots in that lot, bringing us to 30 for the employees and for the guests. You know, a couple, maybe three, 10-minute parking spots, obviously the handicap, and really, you know, what this is, to me, growing up here, you know, Sarkis is such a special place and has been for 50 years, and this is a healthy Sarkis for the next generation, is what it is. So, an aerial view kind of shows, you know, the barrier that I think everybody knows that we'd want to blow out. It is not really well-done in this picture, but everything to the south of that, that one blue car, you know, big patio on the nose there where parking really wouldn't work. Here's more of a look at the interior. I have every square inch of this mapped out with our CAD programming, I mean, all of our equipment is to a half an inch is measured out, but we managed to get 56 seats and four at kind of a, I wouldn't call it a bar, it's more of a coffee bar where our special machine lives, but there's 60 seats, so I can't believe that. When I first looked at the space, 1370 is not a big footprint at all, and especially when you have the offerings that we have, it's, it's a huge challenge. But we've done, this will be the fourth kitchen, each time we've done one, we've shrunk it by about 100 square feet, and we've got it all figured out. I couldn't believe that we could fit 56 chairs plus four. So, you know, another reason why I think it's going to work really well is, like these other gentlemen here, I am from here. I went to Nutria, had a great experience there, all my friends are still my closest friends, you know, we all met there. You know, I'm a pretty, pretty active North Shore resident, especially with the kids now and all the programs we've got to do. You know, I play golf in Windview Men's League, I played golf in the Wilmatt Men's League, and just took down that championship a couple of weeks ago. We got, you know, a million, I'm number seven in my family, so there's just a lot of us running around. And I also came 14 years after my closest sibling, so I'm kind of the bridge in the family, so all my nephews and nieces, which there's now 40 of, they're starting to migrate here, too, and they have kids, so it's just, it's about to get exponential here. Yeah, this has always been home, always will be. I think I have a good sense of what's missing, now living in Wilmatt for two years. Like I said, my kids go here, and I think it's really cool, I share a fence and a gate with the Green Bay Trail. So, we're right on Richmond Lane, kind of near Kyneworth border. And as a kid, I grew up on Elmwood near Sheridan, and I, I didn't really use the Green Bay Trail, and I don't know if it was just not as safe or, you know, back in the day or whatever it was, but I just never really used it. And I can't believe how often I'm out there and how cool it is, it's skateboards or bicycles or going for a run, and I think all these concepts would really be a fun spot for people to stop at, but, you know, I really, I know Left Coast is going to be. So, it just would be a huge honor to be able to do this, and hopefully, you know, be good partners in this. This is, this picture from Nutria, I mean, this is already happening, this is, this is from Homecoming 11 days ago, I think the first. They did a massive fundraiser, and one of the parents sought us out all the way from Chicago. So, having it around the corner, I know is going to be better. The team, that's all in the packet, but again, Michael Madden, Jeff's my right hand here and longtime friend, and he, we started with the PF Chang's group. I mean, he did a million things before that, as did I, but we really kind of learned our blocking and tackling of PF Chang's, and he kind of went on to take my job, and then he went to the East Coast and was with Chipotle and ran close to 40 of those things regionally, and started with a new sandwich shop that went from one to 20 pretty quickly. So, you know, he's got a ton of experience. I think this is going to be number 50 for me in terms of restaurants that I've been consulting on, I've done the concept, I've owned, I've managed, I've opened, I think this is actually going to be number 50 on the nose, but it's, it's close to that. My wife does all the design with me, so it's kind of a family affair there, and then Jeremy's done all of our architecture to date. He, he's a wonderful architect. You know, we've got this thing kind of down now, where you get to work with someone a few times, and each time you make huge mistakes, and then you hopefully try to avoid them, and so he's, he's a real pleasure to work with, too. Yeah, next steps, like everybody kind of said, we're ready to go. I haven't done a deal in a number of months, so I, I've been kind of saving up for this, and really started looking at it about two years ago, so, you know, I've been putting away my pennies to do this, and we are ready to go on that front. You know, I would love to get this open in the spring. You know, things always take way longer than you want, so, you know, we're going to open probably within the minute we possibly can, that's all I can assure you. We are pretty far in the process for, at this stage, I mean, every square inch of the interior is designed, you know, we've got a pretty good outside shell, I think, you know, with, you know, whatever input, you know, we need to get from you guys. I have bought, with all these closures that we've seen, I've bought most of our equipment because it's been going for pennies on the dollar, so I have most of the stuff we need, and I never anticipated a shortage in terms of equipment, but I think new equipment's going to be tougher and tougher to find in the next year, so we're good there. We've got people, you know, we've got about eight supervisors that I wish were managers for us that we've developed, and, you know, when you work for the big corporate companies developing qualified people, and that's kind of the most important piece, and you typically get a concept handed to you that's pretty well-oiled and figured out, and then you've got to develop good people into great, and great people into the best. And so, I wish we could do five more stores right now because we've got so many good people. So, we're good there, and we're excited. Woo-hoo. So, yeah, in conclusion, I really believe we have the right concept for the demographics here in town. I think we have a plan that fits into your, your goals and your market goals there. I know we have a solid contingency here that stopped my Jeep four times a day asking for Left Coast, and it's been happening for two years. We got the right leadership, we have both the know-how and the financial means to do this, and it's not a cheap project. I mean, it's a small space, and per foot, it's, it's almost embarrassing how expensive I, you know, this deal's going to be, if you ask me, but I am so in love with this location. My wife and I like, you know, I mean this in a happy way, but, you know, she doesn't like anything I like, and I challenge her, and, you know, we, so we both love this location, and I can't tell you what that, that's never happened, that's all I can say. So, we drive by it four times a day, and it would just be a huge honor to be part of this community, and, you know, I'm thinking generational, that's, you know, even in here I talked about, I want it for longer than 60 years because I want my kids to be part of it, too. So, yeah. So Jeff has got a bunch of stuff here. I'm going to follow Firecakes lead here and pass out some of our product, and then I thought I'd just turn it over to Q and A, if we can answer anything.
Awesome. Can we do this every day? Thank you, Michael. Where are you the other 51 weeks of the year, all you guys? Thank you. Questions for Mr. Madden?
Great presentation, I honestly don't have any questions. Thank you.
First off, you're a, I'm sorry, Tina.
No, go ahead.
You're a wonderful writer, all the presentations were great, but you write in a very personal conversational way. If you wrote that.
I did. Oh, I wrote it, yeah.
Yeah, it was great. Of the three concepts, yours is the most intense in terms of employment, employees over employees, activity, et cetera, et cetera. You talk in your presentation about the challenge of the site, and you're very straightforward. I'm kind of worried about the ability to handle this kind of traffic and people and so on in that location.
I've designed so many restaurants, and I was even surprised that we could fit this many seats in there. And this thing is so compact and so well-designed, it's probably going to be our most efficient in terms of, that means profitability, you know, we don't have to go 10 feet, you only have to go two feet, probably I've ever had. And so I'm more excited about this layout than probably any restaurant I've ever done.
More excited, more concerned, or just?
No, I'm not concerned. I think it's going to change how I do future deals because we don't need more than 1,500 square feet, and that's huge, because that means I can go to any market and pay Starbucks' price on Main and Main, and, you know, the whole nut's not going to be too overwhelming. So, yeah, no, we're excited. 56 chairs plus four at the bar, and then the patio, you know, we're, we are definitely a summary concept, so we do, we follow, I've never had a concept except for one rooftop bar that followed weather so closely. I mean, it is directly related to if it's snowing, cold, we're not fresh on people's minds, you know, but if it's bathing suit weather and, and you're starting to, you know, it's spring and summer, it's insane. So, that patio is going to add, I think, 80-something more seats outside, not to mention the whole village area where, you know, people can gather, so it's going to be fun.
First of all, this is so damn healthy, I can have another donut, which is a good news.
That's so important, and, and, you know, I'm, I grew up here in Chicago, I know what good food tastes like, and this allows you to do that.
I lived on the West Coast, too, in Cali, in Palces, and I, I totally get.
Yeah.
The, I felt like a void coming back, it was incredible. 60, so 60% of your business right now is takeout?
It is, yeah.
Are you anticipating, would you anticipate the same thing here?
I think it'll be pretty close. It'll be within, you know, if it's 50/50 or 65/35, it'll be pretty close.
I assume it caters mainly to lunch and dinner? I assume breakfast is more in-house?
Yeah, I think you're right. I haven't really looked at it that way, but you're probably accurate with that. It's, we developed an app, I got really lucky, this COVID thing, you know, we lost one location while this was all going, but we are doing, I happened to launch our own app in February, right before this started, what, that was 2020? Not 2019, 2020. And so we started at zero users, and now we have about 10,000 local users, and we're doing 500 transactions a week. So what that allows them to do is pay ahead of time, you know, it's not the Starbucks app, Starbucks app's the best thing on, you know, on planet Earth, but, and they spent about 200 million developing it, so I don't, I don't have that, but this works, it's functional, and allows people to remember, oh, I like it gluten-free, or I don't want to have onions on it, or, and you can request what time of day you want it, and it's just there. And so, if you're not designing a restaurant right now that really is thinking about the takeout component, you're behind in times. And so, in this design, we have kind of a side door that's tucked in. Go back here a little bit. You know, you can see, yeah, or that side door right there between the two garages.
Yeah.
Right to the right there, we're going to have a wall, and it's going to be, here's DoorDash, here's, you know, here's the app, people, and it's, it's really kind of the honor system, but it works, we do it already. So, that allows us to push more people through.
Thank you.
We pushed through, I've seen 130 guests in one hour, so, and we're not satisfied with 10-minute ticket times. I mean, it's, we're trying to get four in three minutes, and all this stuff is made to scratch, so it's, it's just having total pros, you know, that kind of know how to operate. Really, what I got from tonight, from everybody that spoke, incredible passion, and I really think all three are fantastic options, and more importantly, beyond the passion, you've got operators, and that's who you want to surround yourself when you get in this business. It's not idea people and, you know, and design, or it's, it's operators, because that's hard, and it's not sexy, it's not necessarily fun, it's very, you know, it's the same thing tomorrow, you know, so it's, it's, it's difficult, so.
Do you have any suburban locations right now?
I don't, no.
Kind of, it's probably a question I could have asked all three of you, but I'll ask you something, I didn't mention it. It's not so much about operating complexity, but we have had a number of restaurants that have been shortage of staff.
Yeah.
In fact, like they've had to close due to that shortage, and it is a challenge in the suburban market because you don't have sort of all the young people that live close and come back to the job.
Yeah.
What's your thought about the staffing plan?
I've got some nieces at Nutria, I've got, I've got, you know, half of their friends want to get, but they're going to want three shifts, you know, and never on a Friday and Saturday, so it, you know, it doesn't, it's always not as good as you hope, but we have probably five people already earmarked from two locations that are going to come up here. We're going to move our SGM to open it and stay, hopefully, if you can commute, but certainly to open it because you kind of want, you always want that. But it is a challenge, it's brutal. I've had, I mean, I still have people that started with us five years ago that are still working for us, so, you know, that's, that's a good sign, typically when you don't see the turnover in a restaurant, but usually when you take over one to fix it, you need to turn over, you know, after two weeks, someone's out the door. But we lost three people in the last winter, like right, the summer kind of hit, and competitors, you know, kind of poached and paid them double. So, we pay higher than most as it is, and somebody came in and gave them double. And so, you know, I get it, and they've got families, and so it's, that's, you know, I said, okay, you know, it's, I get it, you know, you're going to make a ton of money, so. and somebody came in and gave them double. And so, you know, I get it, and they, they've got families, and so it's, that's, you know, I said, okay, you know, it's, I get it, you know, you're going to make a ton of money. So, and that was painful, because they were our best people, you know. So we're, it's still hard. I mean, it, and I don't know when this is going to go away. I hope, you know, I thought it happened weeks ago, but it hasn't. So it'll be a challenge. I think the product is, the brand and the product. We have really passionate people, and I think I'm going to talk to Northwestern kids, and we're going to get people that are excited to kind of see that, maybe learn more about the business. But our core people, you know, I care more about the kitchen, because I can handle everything else, but the kitchen is, can get scary if it gets sideways on you. So I'm going to make sure we have, we have four people in the back that we're going to bring with us. If that's there, and he's as strong as anybody back there, we're going to, we're going to make it. But it's going to be busy. I mean, if we get to do this, it's, it's, I can assure you, it's going to be busy.
You got 40 nieces and nephews, man. Put in the work.
Yeah, and all their friends, and, yeah.
Well, on that point, is this site too small?
No, it's perfect. And parking, you know, I'm asking for 30 spots. I think we'd take about six for the employees that would be rotating in and out, because the train's right there. So that leaves 24. And we have zero in our other locations, so 24 is unbelievable. So, no. And I, we've, we've done 130 transact, 130 people in an hour. So if it's busier than that, we'll open one, you know, in Glenview or something like that. But I don't anticipate that. This is going to be my only North Shore deal. This is, I, I also kind of changed in the last several years. Like, I wanted to do 25 of these things, and now, I'm not, I'm not afraid of the work, but I just, I just enjoy just the community aspect of it and the families, and, and you don't really get to do that if you're, if you're too, if you're spread too thin. And so we're going to take our time. 2020 was terrifying. And I, I'm going to always pretend it's going to happen again tomorrow. And so, yeah, we're going to go nice and slow from here.
I'm just, I'm assuming the River North location was closing due to COVID?
Yeah.
The lack of traffic that was happening, going to Lou, going to that area?
Yeah, there are a number of issues. But, you know, when you have a concept, you don't really know what you have. So you got to try, you got to try things. You got to try different size footprints, you got to try different demographics, you know. You don't really know what you have until, you know, you do. And so it turns out, the very first one I did in Lincoln Park is, that's us. And it started, you know, when I did this thing, I, I thought it'd be convenient and healthy, and be a little less personal and just kind of fast, you know. It turned out, all of a sudden, I have 14 teenagers being driven up from Northbrook on a Saturday with their parents, taking photos of the food and of the space. And I'm like, what just happened here? Like, I, I didn't expect this. And so that's what we are. We're like, yeah, I kind of coined the term a lifestyle cafe, but it's, people are happy there. People are proud to be seen there with their contemporaries and their friends. And there's an energy about the place, and it comes from the music, it comes from the people that work there. You know, we know their orders, I truly mean that. We know their dogs' names, we know, you know, their kids, we, and, and that's just the type of place it is. And the fact that I live .9 miles down the trail there, I can ride a skateboard to work, I can't wait. I, I really hope I get this opportunity and all the kids' teams and all those things. And it's starting to mean more to me than, than even the profits.
Cothers?
I feel like he's setting us up to be shot.
That's after the meeting's over.
Michael, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Well done. And thank you for feeding me for the third, third time this evening. We won't hold it against Tyler, that she didn't bring us any coffee.
Well, coffee at night probably would not be the best.
And I've been there, my, my son does basketball at Highwood, right there. And so I've, it doesn't make sense to drive there, Max. I've, I've been there quite a bit, hanging out for the 90 minutes. So, it's really good.
These are three businesses we'd love to run after.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I will say is that I want all three of you in town.
Yeah.
Honestly, this is just really. No kidding. It's an embarrassment of riches to have this sort of interest from these sort of operators in, in our community on such a crappy piece of property.
Way to sell it.
Cattolices, the Bella.
Yeah. Oh, that's right, I went this side of the table, no, never mind about that. This pride piece of real estate on the corner. But thank you all. I, I, I don't think there's anybody in the room that, that doesn't think we could make a bad decision with this particular property, based on the talent we have here in the room. It's really been a, an exceptional evening for me. And it just, it just really reinforces in, in my mind, this morning, I was at the, the chamber meeting, and, and my statement that just, I blurted it out, because I, because it's definitely the way I feel, Weneka's on fire right now. And the energy and the growth and the new businesses that are coming here, and just the, you know, the social activity and the diversity of businesses is just fantastic. And thank you all for being willing to come and join the fray with us. It really is a special time and a special place. So, thanks again. I applaud all you guys. Well done. And I know earlier we were talking about a lot of the financial issues and some other bits and pieces. What I'd appreciate is that we, as a group, if you have specific questions about the dollars and cents or the numbers of the like, please get them to David within the next couple of days. We'll probably come back to you with just a round of, of clarifications and questions that came from your presentations. David will be reaching out to you, we'll, we'll get that information. We expect to deliberate on this very soon. And certainly would like to, to have a finalist selected and be moving towards a, a lease agreement before the end of the year. So, and you have to remember, we have budget in the middle of all that, which does tend to occupy a lot of oxygen as well. So, but that's kind of where we're going to be. So, anything else from you guys? No, that's good.
Great.
Great. Well done. Well, it's my favorite time of the evening, though. Item 13, I think, right? Got to be. Here we go again. All right, any motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Both, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.